For those reasons and our abundance of safety for our students, faculty, staff, all of our employees, we want to make sure we keep everybody safe. And we are moving to the remote learning for tomorrow. Just want to remind parents, you should have received that Connect Ed message. It just reminds students they are to follow their regular schedule tomorrow. Or complete the work that may have been sent home. There may be some real young students who may not be yet assigned a device or ready to be able to sign on to those devices. So they may have sent home some work there. So just for everybody's safety, we will be in remote learning mode tomorrow. And we do plan, and we're canceling all extracurricular activities, all after school activities as well. But we do plan at this point in time to resume a regular schedule on Wednesday. So just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that change in our schedule for tomorrow. So at this time, I've asked Tracy Fox and Keith Seifer to bring up to speed on some modifications and changes we made to our schedule and to our mitigation protocols, primarily addressing contact tracing in alliance, in alignment with some of the CDC guidance. So Ms. Fox?
Good evening. Tracy Fox, Director of Risk Management. Can you hear me okay in the mask? From the onset of the pandemic, we have implemented layered strategies for mitigation to reduce the spread of COVID-19. As well to, as to continue operations in our buildings. We recently updated our definition of contact tracing. As you may remember, identified, contact tracing was identified as within six feet for fifteen minutes or longer. But however, per CDC, that has been updated to with the
Isn't that great, you guys? So the Delta variant, it's more contagious and it's more deadly. And the people that are vaccinated are still getting it and spreading it, but asymptomatic. You don't know they have it and they're not feeling it. So it's okay that they're spreading it. Don't worry. I mean, yes, you're still gonna get it from them, but they're vaccinated. So that's okay, right? And so now contact tracing is gonna be like just within the three foot bubble, not three foot and not six foot. And people don't have to quarantine anymore and all that stuff, but that's because we have healthy children in masks, right? That's why. Thank God we have healthy children in masks, cuz now it just makes so much sense.
Three feet for fifteen minutes or longer. So with mask worn, yes, that's an important component of it.
It's good when you touch your cloth mask and you allow like the droplets to come out above the mask so people can hear you. You're actually still protecting the people around you cuz you're like getting your germs and stuff from touching everything on the mask and then you're putting it back on your face for you to breathe in. So you protect all the other people.
Only if there is universal masking, which our district did choose to do from the onset of the beginning.
My healthy children, we discriminated against my family and many others. We said comply or be denied. We did not comply, so my kids weren't allowed to go to school and they also weren't allowed to get a Chromebook. So while the entire school district is doing virtual schooling today, Max is playing Roblox. Cuz I mean, he's five. Kat is still sleeping. And you guys are all logged in and just learning, aren't you? Bet you're not, bet you're not. But we won't see those numbers, guys. Don't worry. But we're about to be shown some numbers, like, you know, how good our kids do in math and reading. Not that that actually matters because but, oh, just exciting. Let's go.
Do seeing anything we've done in the past as far as distance, I wanna make sure that clarification's in. To remain in class should they need to be quarantined. It's only for three feet or less. So that allows us to have more students in class going forward. So it has nothing to do with reducing safety measures at all from six feet to three. It's simply a matter of contact tracing for the purposes of allowing more students to be able to stay in school based on the newest updated guidance.
Correct. And just to also, to just tell you as well is that it's only applicable, I apologize, it's so hard to talk in this. It only applies to students. It does not apply to adults. Six feet still applies in the definition for our educators.
Stay away from those diseased kids.
Briefly go over the vaccination and our quarantine guidance. So those individuals who are identified as close contact, who are vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine.
Oh, good. So, okay, so here's the thing. If you're vaccinated and you get by someone that has COVID, it's okay. You won't show any symptoms if you actually have it, so you don't need to quarantine. So you just stay at school with all the kids, okay? You stay just spreading it without your own. No dinosaurs. Dinosaurs on there. So you can just keep spreading it to everybody cuz you don't know you have it and you don't have the symptoms, so you don't have a fever. Like if an unvaccinated teacher was to get it, they would have a fever and be sent home, so they wouldn't be spreading it. But you have a vaccine. So it's okay cuz you won't have a fever. You'll still be spreading it. Like, it's okay. You'll still be spreading it. It's okay. Cuz you're vaccinated, okay? So no quarantine, no nothing. Don't worry. You don't have symptoms. So as you are asymptomatic, spreading it throughout the school district, it's okay cuz you got a vaccine.
And this is through the Department of Public Health and the CDC. Also, any student that has tested positive within the last ninety days. That's always important to know as well, that if they have tested
So like natural immunity isn't a real thing. So if you've actually had COVID, still get the vaccine. But if you've had COVID in the last three months and you're around someone who's had COVID, like tested positive, you don't have to quarantine either. Because like, some people get it more than once. But And so like if you've had it, you have a natural immunity, but go get the vaccine. But like the natural immunity, like we don't know how long it lasts. We know that the vaccine's natural immunity doesn't last that long, but like we don't know how long like actual natural immunity will like last. So like, get the vaccine because that's what good Democrats do. There's the truth. There's the truth.
Positive in the last ninety days, they also do not have to quarantine. That, we still want any individual who has had direct contact with someone who's positive to monitor their symptoms for fourteen days, wear their masks while they're on MCSD property. And then also it is recommended that they consider getting tested three to five days after the exposure.
Ooh, goodie. Get tested more.
Any student or staff member who is not vaccinated, quarantine is required. And as stated in our previous presentation, any, anyone who is identified as a close contact, they may choose to get testing. It's optional. If they choose to get testing, they can get tested on day five after their exposure. And then wait full seven days and then return on day eight. If they choose not to get tested, it's a full ten days. And again, they must monitor their symptoms for a full fourteen days. And wear a mask again on, on MCSD property. And then also, again, all parents will be contacted by letter as well as a phone call. I think one of the things just to emphasize in this, it is a process, you know, of making, you know, doing the direct contact. Of contact tracing, pulling students in, making phone calls, and then getting the letters. So it does take a little time just to get all that out.
Well, I don't see what the problem with that is. Like literally, people can work from home and do that. Like, hey, this kid got it. Here are all the numbers, blah, 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 blah. Like, we could employ people. They could be the phone call people. Jobs for all.
To our parents.
Ms. Fox, what is the youngest child that can be vaccinated, youngest age?
First of all, why are you on the damn panel if you don't know this answer? Everybody knows this answer. You literally are on the Muskogee County School District, School Board Panel. Like, that's where you are. That's where you work. That's what you do. You are in charge of kids and the school. How do you not know twelve is the age? How do you not know? How ignorant, how ignorant. These people are so stupid. I don't even know I am upset that they have discriminated and segregated my kids. They're clearly doing my children a favor. It's just the fact that they continue to steal my money and your money. They're literally stealing money out of my paycheck. And they're giving it to these scumbags that have been operating in the deficit for years. Ten million dollars in the deficit. Now they're handed thirty-five million dollars of coronavirus money where they force mask your kid. They buy a bunch of laptops. They don't allow them to have access to those laptops because parents can actually see what the kids are not being taught. And, and where are we now? This is where we are? Okay. They say thirty thousand kids are registered. My kids are two of those kids. Today we'll show you how we go and file intent to homeschool. We'll do that next. Don't worry.
Currently, it's twelve and up. And that's with the Pfizer. All right. And Keith's gonna go over the learning for students who are out under quarantine.
Ms. Fox, just one quick thing. I know, and I think I had mentioned it.
That's great. So like, my kids have been in contact with people that have Corona. So do they get a laptop? Do they get an, an anything for, for their quarantine? Look at him quarantining. No, they don't get it. No. Oh, because, oh, their mom asks why. Oh, that's right. Why's not allowed. The scientific method is taught in Muskogee County Schools. It's just not allowed to be used. Okay, guys? Remember.
Well, I think it would be good for the board to see a copy of that letter that goes out to parents, cuz I'm sure we will get some questions.
Good evening. Keith Seifer, Chief Academic Officer for the School District. I'm gonna go with some, just some brief information regarding students that do go out and quarantine. This information has been added to the letter that's associated with being quarantined. As stated in previous board meetings, we are doing, our main focus is communication through our Canvas pages. As you well aware that we went through Canvas as our learning management system over the course of this last year. And the, a great majority of our teachers have established our Canvas pages. And that's where all our content that will be delivered to our students is located. So these bullet points that, that we're trying to address and just create a little bit more clarity on what students and parents are to be expected with, that's located on the Canvas page and as far as student learning. At first, we want to make sure that they, they have, the student and the, and the parents have connected their their learning, their devices and apps through the Canvas page. So those students, if they do not have access to their Canvas pages.
Oh my God, it's so many, uh, uh, if they do not, uh huh, nuh, um, 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 oh my God, spit it out. What the hell?
They can certainly get access. They will need to contact their school or their teacher to make sure that they have those parent codes. To make sure they, they do have access. And most of our kids do. All communication should be going
But my kids don't. They're both registered. So Muskogee County is getting money for them. He's autistic, so they even get special needs money, both for the bus and for the schools. Tire on all his services, so they have the money. But they unenrolled my kids from their school. So they're registered with the school district, so the school district gets all the money for my children. But they're not enrolled in a school, so they're not getting absences, which is fantastic. So, so, we're not gonna report all these parents because we've literally unenrolled their children. My children aren't enrolled in school, yet we went and verified with their school. Because the people that actually like follow those kind of rules, like register on time and verify and bring in all paperwork and upload it multiple times because we have a failing school system here. Oh, those people, yeah, their kids just get unenrolled because their kids were not allowed to go into the school. See, I didn't allow the school to put a mask on my healthy child for no reason. A mask that says made in China and not for medical purposes. That's what it says on their box at the elementary school. I wouldn't allow them to put the mask on my kids, so they wouldn't allow my kid to go inside, so we were sent home. Okay, that's fine. I said, then can we get a Chromebook? So they can like follow along? And they're like, no. All the kids that came here and put their butts in a chair, they get a Chromebook and they can be on virtual today. But your kids, no, 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 no. See ma'am, you ask questions. You stick up for your children. You expect people to be held accountable for their decisions in regards to your children. The rest of the people here in Muskogee County, oh, no, no, no. They just want you to shut up and go away. They like their free daycare. So it doesn't matter that we literally have daycare workers from the Children Network who have worked all last year and all summer and currently now in their daycares with no masks on kids whatsoever. Those same daycare workers will put masks on their own children and send them to Muskogee County Schools, knowing that that's BS. Why are we doing this? Just so they don't have to take their own children to daycare with them. So all of you parents that are fine with the school putting masks on your children, it's because you don't wanna deal with your children. So don't tell me I'm fighting so I don't have to deal with my children. I homeschool two of my children already. And now I'm homeschooling the other two because I won't let schools make senseless medical decisions that will affect our children going forward, especially in a county where our children already do horrific. Not amazing, but horrific. But let's just encourage this do as you're told thing. Because we know how much the local community loves to just listen to authority. Okay? Just do as you're told. Don't speak out. Don't speak up. Actually, cover your mouth in your kid's mouth because we provide free daycare for you. So you can go home and you can get stoned, or you can go and work and not pay daycare, but it's okay, right, guys? Right, guys? It's all all right because you don't have to take care of your kids cuz we will as long as you allow us to put a mask on them. Muzzle them children up and we'll continue to babysit them. If you don't muzzle them, we don't want them. We will discriminate against them. We will segregate them from the school children and the local community altogether. And we'll make sure that our school, go look up the demographics. It's already sixty percent black, twenty-six percent white, the rest mixed. Those are our demographics. Go look up the private school demographics now. Tell me that's sixty percent black and twenty percent white. There's a disparity. Go ahead, buddy. Mommy will help you. There's a disparity here. And this is definitely, it's funny how our private schools, by the way, masks are optional. So all these people with money can pay to have their kids go for optional masking schools, a private education where they actually get an education. And all us poor people that pay tax dollars for our children to get a public education, that's forced masking. Do as you're told. You're gonna get a subpar education if that, but I mean, do as you're told. You're saving grandmothers and stuff, right?
Through our Canvas pages. So any, any communication that the teachers are providing, we're trying to create one source so they can, they can create that opportunity for they can, for them to communicate through that one, one source. That doesn't mean that we can't communicate in other ways, through email, through phone calls. But all of it is done through, we wanna do through the Canvas pages. There is opportunities to check for calendars of events through our Canvas pages. We expect those to be updated by our teachers, all lessons, videos, and activities. Due dates, all can be accessible through our Canvas pages. Students will, during this timeframe, students will be expected to complete all their assignments. And be, and as required by those due dates, those, those can be turned in through their Canvas pages as well.
Like last year, right?
Absences due to quarantine is, are considered excused. So they do have access to make up that work. Of course, we wanna make sure that they're keeping up with their work during that timeframe. We don't want them to get behind. So it's, it's very important that they have
Well, then dude, you might wanna stay for the rest of this meeting cuz when this guy starts spewing the data in regards to our math and English, like our grades, like our testing, you might find out we've left a few kids behind. But it's okay. We continue to pass them on, so they're not actually like left behind. They're just like mentally left behind, but as per the grade. So they'll get like a degree, but gotta go wipe the butts.
Access to those Canvas pages to see those assignments.
Are, are they being instructed in this letter or whatever that excused doesn't mean non-engaged? That they have to engage?
That's correct. And, and in that, this, students will be expected to complete all, all assignments and meet required due dates. It states up in the, in the initial. All this information is in the, the actual letter itself. Students should be actively engaged in their learning, so it is being communicated. Teachers, they may be able to do Zoom sessions during this timeframe. They can hold office hours after, after school. If they choose to do that, they can provide short recorded direct instruction sessions. That's not uncommon. A lot of our teachers do that anyway. And then we also included that Brainfuse information we talked about at the last board meeting. I put that information in there as well. So they have access to that as well.
Board meeting. That wasn't there.
Just wanna remind everybody, we, at your direction, we are not offering concurrent teaching, so I wanna make sure everybody understands we're not doing the concurrent model where kids
Oh, we understand. No concurrent model. My kids can't be on virtual. Well, everybody else is in school. We get it. Except today, everybody's on virtual. So my kids could attend today. No, 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 no. That's right.
Can stay home and have in-person instruction being taught concurrently with the virtual. The other thing I wanna make sure everybody understands, there are some people who don't understand, and I wanna make sure they understand this as well. Don't understand that we cannot
There's some people who don't understand. They just don't understand. They just don't, everybody understands full well. They understand. You like to pretend like they don't understand. You don't understand. We have thirty-one thousand kids in the school district. You don't understand the demographics. You don't understand. We understand full well. You don't understand. So you can keep on saying you don't understand and explaining it like we're children. But clearly, those kind of explanations are only needed for those that serve on our actual school board, like Naomi. She needs the elementary, oh, let's see, framed explanation of everything. We don't. We see it. Full picture. It's disgusting. Your grades show it. You're disgusting. They're disgusting. Here, Max. Say thanks for kicking me out of school, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, this school, Dr. Lewis.
Say thank you for giving me no school to go to.
Thank you, no way, no school, no school.
Yay! Max, you wanna go to school?
No school.
No school. Okay, too easy. Dr. Lewis made sure of that. No school.
For a separate virtual school totally at this point because like every, most districts I know, about two-thirds, last study I saw, two-thirds of school districts are experiencing a teacher shortage. And we simply don't have enough teachers to teach.
A teacher shortage where one teacher could literally instruct multiple classrooms? Because it would be virtual? You mean, one fourth grade teacher for like a hundred students? You mean, we could literally have CSU kids come in and help? God, those kids could teach our kids better. Is that what you mean? So like, I understand in the classroom, one teacher, twenty students. That makes sense. On Zoom. You could literally employ one teacher. You could have multiple people all logged in from home. Your assistant, Director of Transportation, she could be a teacher on Zoom, okay? And she could instruct multiple kids, considering Ms. Sanders last year was just put on YouTube on Zoom. She didn't even teach the classes. So what's it even matter? Give me a break. Your excuses are BS. We know they're nothing but excuses. Nobody's buying it except for all you at the country club together, you and the mayor and the city manager, all bestie besties. Cuz you guys have money to buy all your houses and own all the real estate in Georgia. While everybody else just sits here and gets no access to anything. You operate everything in the deficit. And the city just falls down around us as you guys build more hotels and continue to graduate F students, F students. And then you wonder why we have no electricians, we have no plumbers, we have no teachers, we have no anything. Because if you get the opportunity to get the hell out of Columbus, you sure the hell are. And if you are unfortunate enough to get stuck here, you're not educated enough to work here.
In-person and separate virtual school at this time. We hope to be able to do that in the future. But given what we were directed by the board, not offering the concurrent teaching, this is our option.
What we were directed by the board. So it wasn't that we couldn't do it. It's not that we don't have Chromebooks for everybody. It's not that we don't have access. It's really not even that we don't have teachers, you guys, okay? They were just directed by the board not to do it. You wanna know why? Because those kids don't log in. Because lazy parents don't take their kids to school and they don't make them log in and they don't make them do the homework. That's why. That's exactly why. They cannot force the kids to do the stuff. The kids were lacking so bad on virtual that it's not given to anybody but the sick. But there were kids that showed up, my kids. There were kids who did their work, my kids. Those kids could do it. But those kids have now been shoved out of that school district and the school system altogether that could actually like make the school look good. Because trust me, they're most certainly not scoring Fs in everything they're taking tests on, like a majority of our kids are. But I don't know, you know, keep on, whatever. Clearly, Muskogee County School District knows what it's doing. Look at these cream of the crop.
Has to still have some contact with the teachers by way of Zoom or recorded lessons or whatever, based on the teacher's ability to do that and, and provide that instruction for the students directly.
Hi, Dr. Lewis. This is Kya Chambers. I have a quick question for Ms. Fox, if I can.
Go ahead. Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay. If we have a student that are, is quarantined and you said they can be tested and if they receive a negative test, they can return back to school on day eight?
Yes, so it's seven full days after the exposure. So technically it'd be day eight after their original exposure.
But if they don't get the test, then it's ten days, so why not just take the two extra days off and not stick that crap up your kid's nose?
But testing on day five, correct. After the exposure.
And there's a specific type of test, right?
They should wait until day five in order to take the test and then if it's negative, they can return back to school on day eight.
Correct. And that's the key, that's the key word, negative.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. These are calendar days. Some people get confused and think they mean school days. These are legitimate calendar days. It should only be five days of school if they have a negative test.
That, that's a great point. Great point. Thank you so much, Ma'am.
And, and just a last, a couple of last reminders to our families is just if you have a student that is sick, please stay home. Contact the school and we'll give you further directions on what to do to return back into the building. Secondly, if they are sent home for quarant
No, if they're sick, they have a mask on, so clearly they're protecting other people from them. So just send them to school. School is just free daycare. That's all that it is.
Mean, there's no after school activities, no football. That applies to after school activities as well. Do not come to school until you receive the results of the test. So, and thank you again for your time.
One, one question before you go.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as, you know, this is, we are a large district. And how are you centralizing that communication from the school? So they won't have to wait until someone calls them back or, or the phone is ringing because you're just one person. So how are we centralizing receiving this information if a parent notifies the school that there, there has been an exposure or an infection? And you know, because we have fifty-six builders, you can have multiple occurrences of that. And so a central, some kind of message
Don't you guys just love this where they ask questions they already know the answer to, but it's like their way of pretending like they're curious? And they just wanna know so you can explain it to me and the people at the same time. When, let's be real, the only reason they got two hundred views on this meeting is cuz people thought shit was gonna blow up like it has every other meeting. But I thought he was telling me he's not, whatever. So Ms. Green is clearly the real superintendent. She makes all the decisions and she gives the nasty looks to people. And she's like, mm, okay, and just passes on to the next. So every time like Gail Payne gets up and speaks, they all disregard her by their fabulous facial expressions and eye rollings. And we love it how last time she made sure to say, well, Ms. Scope said she volunteered. Oh, Ms. Payne knows me and she said, yeah. Except that was two years ago before coronavirus, which Ms. Green knew. She's fully aware of. She just likes to pretend. They give such BS, BS, and we all see through it. Except all the people enjoying free daycare won't call them on it cuz they just like the free muzzle daycare. So, all right, hey, whatever. But I'm gonna keep on making these videos just for the hell of it cuz I'm crazy.
To gene or some kind of process so that every call is answered timely, so we can get the instructions out and be consistent with how we're delivering our next steps.
So each school has a COVID liaison. I meet with that, those teams every Friday. So we can update on any updated guidance, answer questions, concerns. Any, you know, we have a great relationship with our community, great relationship with the Department of Public Health. So we'll sometimes bring them in to help answer questions, but all But all questions um and comments should be directed towards our schools, um COVID liaison. And they can answer any of the questions, um probably just as well as I can, just because we've we've been in it together um since the onset of the pandemic.
And I mean the reporting of the incident, so when you say each school has a liaison, so we have fifty-six liaisons? Okay, great, and so the schools will report their cases to that liaison? Are they housed at the school?
Yes, yeah, they do send up, um per state law, they do have to report those um positive cases to the Department of Public Health and also do contact tracing. Um they will send those reports um either directly to the Department of Public Health or myself or Jeanne Paul Hamus, our lead nurse. Um and then we will report those up, and then we also complete um our weekly um reports um for the state, which is also what you see on our Friday website.
I have a question, um Dr. Lewis and and Ms. Fox, you might wanna stop, stay, uh how are we handling the masking? Universal masking rule on our property with extracurricular and after-school activities, especially like sports, band, things like that?
I just wanna know how this woman is even, uh how is she faring right now? I know they changed the policies at the last meeting where she's no longer allowed to laugh at mom's posts on Facebook. See, I'm not on Facebook, I don't really care what people freaking do. But I know other parents who have expressed concern about the masks, and Cindy Williams goes around just laughy faces, ha-ha, and just mocks actual parents. Like it's no big thing, except she was just told she couldn't do that anymore. She had to excuse herself from that school board meeting, cause she's like, oh, I can't mock the parents of the kids that I rule over. I mean, she is the queen of the north side, you know, all the lawyers and the doctors, Green Island, Eagle Ridge, you know? All those Richie Rich downtown, she's the rep for all of their kids. So you know, we really like our masks and keep them, cause muzzled and seen and not heard, cause I don't know, we like Sharia law around here, huh?
Outdoors are not required. The masks, the masks are only required, universal masking is only required indoors, they're not required outdoors.
But they're gonna die.
I'm gonna ask everyone's help too, please, if your children are showing symptoms other than the typical uh allergies or things of that nature, please keep them home. We need your assistance when you send a child to school, and they're symptomatic, uh then it just, once again, puts other people at risk. And creates quite a problem in terms of exposure, contact tracing, sending students home for quarantine that uh might not be necessary otherwise. So uh just help us with that, check your children for any symptoms beyond what they typically would have, and you all know the ones that you know they typically have as far.
I mean, how stupid are you people, how stupid are you to be told the same thing over, do you guys know you should wash your hands yet? Do you know you should mask up yet? Do you know that you are the spreader and you are killing grandmas, do you know yet? So if your kid is sick, don't send them to school. Because I know this has only been told to you like a million times, but you're really stupid, so let me just be the guy that tells you one more time. So you just really get it, so you just, so I'm just, you know, I'm I'm the guy that's telling you to do the things that you've heard. Everybody say a million times, but you're too dumb to do them, so I'm gonna tell you one more time to do these things, what the fr-
Sore throat or a sneeze or cough or something like that, that might be uh typical of allergies or things they typically have, uh so that's really important. And um just everyone, we're all in this together, we all gotta work together and collaborate and be cooperative and be very patient and flexible. Uh people are working tirelessly.
I know we're not in this together, cause you have purposely segregated me and my children from this community, most of military families actually. Because we seem to be the ones asking the questions and actually talking back. If you'll go ahead and you'll go back, look at everyone who's actually spoke out against it, it's very, very funny that we all belong to military. We are either military spouses, veterans, or retired, it's so ridiculous. It's actually laughable, where I'm like, damn, we really just need like a school for vet kids, where we're not all scared of everything. We don't, we're not as susceptible to the bullshit propaganda, we call people out on their crap, and we actually expect things for our tax dollars. Okay.
So every day we're shifting resources, and we just are so thankful for those people who understand that and are uh working with us to to try and make sure we continue in-person learning. Because again, the in-person learning we now know from research studies have been done already, the critical nature of having a uh students in front of our teachers, we saw last year. Yes, there are some students who can work virtually very effectively, but the vast majority socially, emotionally, developmentally, academically. Need to be in school and with with teachers, and we're working very hard to try and keep our schools.
They all, like, they all need to, but not my kids, right? My kids don't need to be in school with teachers, so screw their mental wellbeing, right, right? And screw their resources, even though my tax dollars pay for them, right, right? Screw me and mine, because we don't just comply, and we don't just follow along, and we ask questions, right, right? But everybody else's kids matter, but my kids don't, right, right? I mean, I got the message loud and clear, I'm just like repeating it, because that's like what we do, right? I like, I watch the meetings and I see we just say the same thing over and over again, like our kids are failing, they don't even know addition. Just pass them on to the next grade and we'll say it again next year.
And functioning, but I do wanna stress this one other point. We talk a lot about, yes, my kid may not be showing symptoms, or my, somebody, when we have to go through this contact tracing. We have to quarantine people according to the guidance and the guidelines we have. We still have to function as a school. If I lose bus drivers, if I have culinary technicians who are not serving the food, if we have te- too many teachers out, we cannot function and operationalize our system. So that's why it's so imperative that we all work collaboratively and try and work together to ensure that we can keep our schools open. Because we know that schools, just as the CDC and others recognize, schools are an integral part of our uh of our community, of our economy. And all those things are so critically important to keep schools open, so help us to do that, we're not gonna, we wanna do it safely, but we have to do it collaboratively. So that's all I can ask, and the last thing I'll just continually, uh I know, uh the mayor, myself and others, uh all of our health professionals are encouraging. Please, if you have not been vaccinated yet, talk with your health provider, uh to see if that's something that you can do. And your family can do, because the best way we can surround our children uh is with.
You can do some things, I don't even know her name, I just tell, say my daughter's name, um shut up. I don't wanna tell you to get a vaccine, but go talk to your doctor, because I know all the doctors at Piedmont and Francis are gonna tell you to get the vaccine. So like, let me just put you in the direction, and like that one girl that is like a doctor on our medical panel that are saying like masks don't work on kids. Like we got rid of her, cause like, it's funny, because you know, she's like a doctor for a bunch of veterans, so it makes sense that she would be like sensible. And like actually like look at data and science and be reasonable and logical, but we don't like her, so we're not gonna let her talk anymore, because like facts and stuff. And so, yeah, I'm super hot, you guys, I need to tank up, I can't stand this guy's voice, he's just such a bunch of BS, it's like just listening to Dr. Fauci.
With vaccinated adults, if they're able to, so that's critically important, and just wanna encourage everyone to at least have the conversation with your medical providers. Uh to help us try and uh prevent or at least reduce the spread of the virus. Thank you.
Okay, one um question for, not really a question for Keith. Uh could you send that information, all those options that those quarantine kids have? Dr. Lewis, you told me.
And we'll post this on our website tomorrow.
These are all the ways that if you're too lazy to get up and take your kid to school or get them dressed. These are all the ways that you can say your kid doesn't need go to school, okay? I'm gonna go find all the ways for all the people in my district to not go to school and not go to work and get all the monies and all the things just delivered to them. Because they are just so inept and oppressed. Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're gonna send you all the letter, we'll send you the PowerPoint, and then we'll post.
All the letters and all the things, don't worry Naomi, you're gonna have to read them though, you're gonna have to actually read, you need someone to do that for you?
Alright, that's it. Thank you so much for the update, uh we do need to motion to approve the agenda, but I do want to ask, and we know that Ms. Chambers is. On the conference call, I wanna ask um for motion to excuse Ms. Tillery.
Some second.
Alright, motion by Ms. William.
We're gonna excuse the new girl who said she was for optional masking, okay? Cause she's not gonna make any decisions right away, because she doesn't have all the information, except she knew she was running for school board. And she's literally been living here forever and has been completely involved in St. Luke, and so it doesn't really take that long to get up to speed, I'm literally up to speed. But let's go ahead and just excuse the one person that said she was gonna fight for optional masking, that she was on our side, because she's not actually on our side. Because really, it's just a bunch of people with money that just like to pad their resumes. They're all just gonna wash each other's hands. Like literally, they might do that in some weird like ceremony at the country club, where they don't wear their masks, but they joke about the fact that they make your children.
Goodbye, Ms. Buckner, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers, alright, that passes, uh one point zero four need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Chambers. Hand vote, all in favor, raise your hand please. Alright, that passes. Next, we're in two point zero one, our system-wide recognitions. And while Ms. Thomas is coming, I I need to welcome all of our our guests. I see administrators out there, if you would just wave our our hands, we have our partners from the library, Mr. Hark.
Oh god, administrators, would waste money, okay, I really, I honestly just don't even have the patience for this, oh my god, we're nineteen minutes in. Shoot myself and sit through anymore of this, the truth of the matter is, there were two names on the public agenda. The VFW guy from last week didn't show up, and then there was someone else, I don't even know what he was saying. I don't even remember, where is he, let's just find whoever spoke on the public agenda and call it a day, because honestly, the rest of this is trash. Oh yeah, I'll do a separate video with how well Muskogee County School District is doing by our children, it'll be great, the test scores are fantastic. Oh, children, yay. A human. Oh yeah, this is the public agenda guy, he wants everybody in masks forever, that's right.
Citizens are encouraged to follow normal channels to address such problems, which is with the superintendent's office, through our executive assistant, Ms. Karen Jones. Mr. Miller, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you, my name is uh Mike Miller, fifteen forty-four Wells Drive, Columbus, Georgia. I did have a PowerPoint presentation that would've made it a little easier. Um but I wanted to speak to the uh American Rescue Plan, uh the way the funds are being allocated. Um but first, I think over the past eighteen months, the board, the employees of the school district. Have done an amazing job.
An amazing job.
Students and all the um.
I'm so excited about these Democrats getting up and speaking, and they're like, oh my god, let me go put on my mask, I made a PowerPoint presentation for the entire school district. But like, I'm not paid by the school district, so they're not gonna like show it or anything. Imagine if they let you show your PowerPoint presentation, then they would have to let me show mine, where I show, we've had four hundred and thirty-six deaths from coronavirus. And out of those four hundred and thirty-six, only fifteen of those in the last two years of the most deadly virus in the world were under the age fifty. Zero under the age twenty-two, zero deaths of school-aged children in Muskogee County in the last two years. I would be allowed to show that infographic if they allowed you to show yours. So, I'm glad you have all these good ideas, and maybe instead, next time you just email them, cause we know how responsive they are. Or just run for school board, guy, I'm sure you got some good ideas, but this and behind your mask? Columbus, we do amazing.
Challenges that occurred last year. So, when we look at the use of funds, I know a lot of it was going towards uh summer learning, which sounded like a great program. Um and then PPE. I think we need to do more as far as mitigation measures to support the teachers and the staff in the district. I would hope that uh they would be able to spend more time.
Is he married to a teacher or something? I agree, I think you need to do more for the teachers, screw those kids, I agree. You know what, I think we should just have one building where we just put all the kids over there in masks. And then all the teachers can go to this building over here, and maybe we could do like manicures, pedicures, you know, like massages and stuff for the teachers. Cause the teachers, you know what, screw the teachers actually, they're the ones that actually do the work, how about the administrators? I think we should just go just administration, like maybe, I don't know, like give them all raises and maybe like. Jobs at the Pentagon or something, I'm thinking, like. School boards, school board meetings are definitely about all like the teach, the staff, the staffer is what matters here. Guys, not the children and like actually educating them, what they learn, listen, this guy's got it, he's got it all figured out.
With the students and not have to worry so much about the safety precautions, knowing that. You know, we're taking care of them, and since we received a large amount of money. Um I'd like to see it allocated uh in different places. So four areas that I thought uh you might wanna consider is providing high-performance masks. For teachers and employees.
We can't even get them to actually provide CDC compliant masks, and he wants high-performance masks provided. We have millions upon millions upon millions of dollars, millions. We won't even provide CDC compliant masks, this dude has a cloth mask with strappy strings on it. And he wants to get high perfor- why not have a fundraiser, how come the money has to come out of the American Rescue Plan? Like, why wouldn't you just do a fundraiser and get these masks for the teachers, how dare you allow them to continue to work with cloth masks on? High-performance mask. When the kids don't even have CDC compliant masks on, I just can't, this is too fun.
Be it N ninety-fives, KN ninety-fives, or KF ninety-fours. It's going to reduce the amount of.
No, you know what it's gonna do, it's gonna deplete their PPE, a freaking bucket of money. Right now, they get to put these BS surgical, whatever the hell masks on these kids and call it a day. Not CDC compliant, but that's okay, forced masking's all good, if they had to do KN ninety-fives, they have to be thrown away at the end of the day. They cost way more money, so every single day, thirty-one thousand masks? And then the staff of like ten thousand, so that's forty thousand N ninety-fives a day, a day. What's that cost, guy, is that in your PowerPoint presentation? I wanna see that.
Virus coming out if they're sick, it's also gonna reduce the inhalation dose with the shortage of employees. Um you know, the bus drivers, the teachers, if we can do everything possible to keep them safe. Um I think that's gonna go a long way as far as retention of employees. The second thing would be CO2 monitors in classrooms. A lot of countries are using these, they're not a hundred percent, but it gives you an estimate. On the amount of fresh air being brought into a room. Generally, you wanna be be below eight hundred.
Honestly, Mike, whoever you are, this is so sweet, and it actually makes a little bit of sense, but that's the problem here, it makes sense. To monitor the actual air quality, but if we did that, people would know the air quality. And so because of that, you see here in Muskogee County, they don't actually have like goalposts or markers in which they like deal with. And especially in which they show us, we don't get to actually see it. I mean, they provide a PowerPoint presentation to us as well to show us all the failing grades, but they hide it in a two-hour school board meeting. With no comment section, so no one can actually discuss it, just the country club, remember silly goose, I mean, whatever, good ideas, keep going.
Currently in here, it's fifteen hundred. So that means their exchange rates are, should be increased, or a window open, or a HEPA filter installed. The uh third thing would be a rapid antigen test. To be provided to employees. I think it would give.
But we don't even give that to doctors. I went into surgery the other day with a sequent mask on, surgery. In a still clean room. The doctors, the nurses don't even get antigen tests. I think this is a great idea, great idea. Put rapid test like at the front door of everyone.
Give them a sense of security.
That's what masks.
Knowing that they're going home to their families.
Well, they think they're not going home to their families. You think if you go and work in Muskogee County School District, if you're a kindergarten teacher, you're not gonna go home to your family, you're gonna die? That's a freaking mental disorder. That's a phobia, like irrational fears. That's what that is.
Thing to do. And have them available voluntarily if they wanna take one.
Yeah, agree.
And then the HEPA filter units. Recommendations are for two in a classroom. Now I know the ventilation system's been checked and the district says they're getting five, six air changes an hour. But they're using MERV nine filters.
We have to use MERV nine.
Which.
We have to. Alright, this guy is about to say use thirteens, we can't, watch. Oh my god, they're down their own rabbit holes. Oh my god, the only choice is to be an independent and to just watch all these Democrats and all these Republicans in their crazy rabbit holes. Oh my god, and we're just all victims in the me- in the middle to their insanity. That's fantastic.
Ashroy recommends MERV thirteen. And just because you're getting air exchange rates. Doesn't necessarily mean you're bringing in enough fresh air.
This guy has no idea. He's gonna spew all this. He's gonna be all smarty-smarty. He thinks he did something here with his PowerPoint presentation. But they're just gonna refute this the second that he walks away and he can't even say anything back to this, so they're gonna make him look like an idiot. They're gonna bring up someone that's gonna say. We can't put in the thirteens, you're a freaking moron. And so everything he said before this is gonna be like, oh, that guy's an idiot. Nobody cares. Only teachers and administrators watch this. The actual public does not. This is so silly. I feel bad for this guy, but not really.
So that would be the fourth. And then have the PowerPoint presentation pulled up. There is a cost-effective. It's a Corsi airbox.
Oh, can you zoom in, guys?
Basically put together with five MERV filters. And a box fan. And you can make them for a hundred dollars. And they're filtering through five MERV thirteen filters.
He should make one for his house.
Which is gonna pull the virus out of the air. And then I know my time is up, I'll just finish with this. The Columbus community should realize that the success economically, socially, and educationally. Is closely tied to a thriving public education system.
And so now go and look at our success. Go, go.
Smella, we appreciate that. Um, and and thank you for emphasizing the point of wearing the mask and I thank everybody for. Cooperating with us and and honoring our request to wear your mask and keep them on while you're in our buildings.
Alright, thanks for your time.
Just, um, and I may be, uh, when he was giving, um, information on, uh. Uh, filtering, is there any way he can make sure that we make sure we are intact with all that, you know?
Do you, Mr. Lilberg, do you wanna review real quickly our exchange and filtration system?
Uh, he was correct. We're 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 reporting as our air exchange is. Uh, we do use MERV nine filters. Uh, MERV thirteen filters have not been proven to catch the COVID. COVID is a three-part, two-particle.
Told you.
It's a two-particle variant and, uh, MERV thirteen, even thirteen, MERV thirteen filters don't. Um, don't capture a two-part variant. So our MERV nines work just as well as MERV thirteen.
They don't, they should.
Our equipment is not equipped, the motors in our equipment, uh, in our HVAC.
Also, it would require us to have up-to-date HABAC, blah, 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 blah. And we're not gonna do that even with the millions and bajillions of dollars, because what we're gonna do with all that money is waste it. Like we've done for decades.
The equipment is not equipped for, um, MERV thirteen filters. We have to crank up. The power and the speed of our, of our equipment and it is our colleagues around the state have shown that. You crank those things up and put in a heavier filter in there, it burns out, it burns up the the systems, the HVAC systems. Our systems are not meant or made to have MERV thirteens in them. It puts an extra strain on our, on ours, so. We feel very confident in what we're doing, um.
Very confident, okay.
Yeah, so we, we feel like we're good.
What we're doing, but he just told you that M nines also don't take the virus out. So we're just filtering out air. We have crap air quality in the schools. It doesn't matter, you have a mask on, you can't even breathe in the good air, you're breathing in your own crap.
Thank you. I was just trying to make sure we emphasized what we were doing, that we were taking the mitigation steps and process to keep everyone as safe as we possibly can. Alright.
Alright.
Moving into a, uh, presentation, four point zero one, Georgia Mouths Home's results.
Thank you. Okay, so now, this is the funnest part of the whole thing. Now, we got through public agenda because no parents come and actually speak during these things. That's so silly. I will never waste my time going to one of these things again. But I will absolutely. If I can't be live, if we can't be live streaming for like a live react to Columbus, Georgia IRL. Then I'll at least do this crap. And so, yeah. Okay, this, this is the best part. We're just gonna let this play so you can all see how smart, how good, how educated our kids are. Because we have the best teachers and we have the best schools and they just are all rated F and it's fantastic. F for fantastic, fantastic.
Good evening, y'all. Patrick Knopf, Director of Research Accountability Assessment. So it has been a while since we've done this. Um, and, um, I just wanna preface this with, uh, it has been a while and a lot of things have changed, as we well know. Uh, so, um, what I hope to do this evening is at least give you some, um, context for the results that we do have. Um, what it can help us see and kind of what we're gonna do next. So, just to give you a little bit of background, when all of this started with the pandemic, when we went out pretty early on, the state had requested and and. Along with other states, received a waiver back, um, in twenty twenty to not give out. Not to administer state assessments. We followed up in the fall, the state did again, once we began school for the twenty twenty-one school year, they requested a waiver again. Um, and actually requested it a couple times, um, but were denied. And so because of that. Um, they responded by, um, basically offering additional flexibility to districts. One of the options would have been to actually administer tests in the fall. Um, from the prior year, um, they gave us flexibility in the windows, how we scheduled it, um, allowing for smaller groups of students to come in and test. Um, but they gave us a lot of flexibility with that. Um, but in addition to that, we were also, um, instructed to, um. Use that flexibility to also, if we had a waiver, um, with a, a state waiver, that we would not use it for promotion retention. Um, and also that, um, we would not require virtual students to come into the building solely for the purpose of testing. That actually came from the feds and the state, um, passed that on as well. So, given all of those things. Um, if you remember, I updated you guys last spring when we had to make some adjustments to our plan just because of the new guidance that we got. Um, it looked like.
He just said, the fed said we can't let virtual kids in for testing, but the kids could actually like gone in and tested. But this stuff is fantastic. So first we start out with all the excuses on why the numbers are gonna be so abysmal, okay? So here's a big list of excuses and here are all the extra excuses and oh, the big bad winner of all excuses. Coronavirus. Due to coronavirus, our kids are doing real shitty in school. They've always done shitty, but they're doing extra shitty right now because. I mean, not us, coronavirus. Oh my god.
We were not gonna have a large number of students coming in virtual, from the virtual environment to test. Um, and that was what that was born out of. So a couple things also, reliability and comparability. Um, when you look at the results, we are not comparing them to, as we have in the past. Where we would do a year-over-year comparison or a cohort comparison or even looking at our comparison districts. Um, because, again, the guidance we got from Udo was that 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 really all of this should be interpreted in in the context of the pandemic. Um, because the tests were designed, assuming that, you know, we've had high participation rates, around ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of our students take the assessment. And so, the assumption is that students are sitting in class all year, getting a full year of instruction. And then they go in to take the test, and that is clearly not what happened this year, so this past year. Um, so we really have.
Or the year before, or the year before, or the year before, but just like especially last year, so don't hold it against us.
avoided, um, you know, doing comparisons year-over-year. Um, and I, in in talking about, you know. Cause people want to compare. I mean, we wanna look, we wanna see how we did with other districts, how we did with the state. Um, and and I liken that to the idea that if we tested half of this room. Um, and then said that that result that we got is reflective of the abilities of the room, that clearly is not the case. And in some cases, it would be, we would only test the back row. Um, so if we look at what some districts did, um, and what the state did as a whole. Um, it's really very difficult to draw any comparisons, whether it's year-to-year, district, district, school-to-school, um, even cohort-to-cohort. So again, Udo has said to us, they're not gonna use it for accountability measures. Um, we're not actually gonna get a CCRPI score, um, from the twenty twenty-one data that we had. Um, in the past, they used that to identify, um, comprehensive support and targeted support schools. Um, and also it, you know, the the growth scores were used for teacher evaluations. None of that is on the table this year based on these results. So what I have is, and what I've shared with you here is, I wanna give you some context for the percentage of students that actually took the test statewide. And for the grade level and subject. One of the things you'll notice is as we go up in years, the number of students that took the test. Overall decreases. Um, and again, also, you know, the board also, um, the state board passed.
Cause we know the tests are crap. They stress our kids out about the test because really it's the teacher's pay. So my kid's coming home with all this anxiety at, in third grade, because all her friends have all this anxiety about these tests, these tests. I'm like, you don't even have to take the test. If you don't want to, but whatever, they're just tests, who cares? Just take it. Oh, but I'm gonna blah, 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 and my teacher says I need to blah, blah. Nah, your teacher should have been teaching you all year. If you don't know it by now, you don't know it. You cramming during a week's vacation in third grade. Using your whole vacation to go and study all the things she was supposed to be teaching you all year long, so she looks good, um, we're gonna go in, no. And just go in and take the test, the end. Most years, we opt out of it. This year, they tried to say they weren't gonna pass the kids on to the next grade in third and fifth. If they didn't take it. So my kid went ahead and took it and come to find out that wasn't true either, because nothing they tell you is actually true. It's all lies. Now, let's see, third grade. This is where we are. I mean. Yeah, not bad at all, right? Cool. I like seventy-seven.
The rule that the end of course would not count for twenty percent of a student's final grade, so that also had a large part in many students not taking the end-of-course exams. Um, just because there was not really any incentive for them to do that. But you can see here, we were pretty closely matched with the state on this. We were at seventy-seven percent and they were at seventy-nine. And if you look at the performance, you can see again our reading levels. I know this is, um, gonna be a lot to the.
Do you like how they show his PowerPoint presentation, but they won't show the publics?
But again, I just wanna remind everyone that, again, this is not necessarily reflective of all the students testing. Um, and another question that I get.
Okay, so in third grade, about fifty percent, fifty-one percent of our kids. Are reading on grade level or above. So they're reading third grade or higher, fifty percent. Which means fifty percent are not reading at a third grade level in third grade. Developing and above is the other fifty percent. No, it's fifty percent. And proficient and above, we have twenty-eight percent. Of thirty-one thousand kids that are proficient and above in reading. Now, what does that mean? What does proficient mean? Does that just mean really good at third grade, third grade and fourth grade? What does it mean? They're not gonna actually show you any infographics to really explain it, but like they said coronavirus, so it's alright.
Only is who tested. Was it our high performers? Was it our low performers? And the only answer I can give you is yes. Um, it was all the above. And it just depends on where they were and what school they were in.
Just depends.
But the reading levels, you can see, were.
Oh, but we're gonna gloss over that, okay, you guys? We're gonna gloss over that. It just depends on what school they attended, where they were. So we're not gonna actually look at a map of Columbus, Georgia and be like Eagle Ridge, uh, Hannan, uh, Downtown Elementary, uh, Dawson. We're not gonna actually look at them and show you these kids, these schools. They can't even read at a grade level, but these schools, actually ninety percent of them, I guarantee, I guarantee if you actually looked at the numbers by schools. You would be able to see. And it's not money. I'm so sick of it. There's so much money at these schools over here on the south side. They have so much money. And they're still F's. They're still F-rated schools. It's not cause they don't have the money. Wasn't it going?
Fifty-one point eight percent are developing and above, was it fifty-one point three? And a proficient above was at twenty-eight percent, and that's for ELA. And for math, we were proficient and above at a twenty-three point nine percent.
I had a clarification question. I mean, didn't most of our in-person students, they pretty much had to take it, right?
Yeah, I mean, well, honestly, we had a number of them that opted out as well. And opted out by basically staying home.
But not to make a statistical difference, so give me a break. Some chose to stay home, most did not.
The week of testing. So we did have some of our in-person students who.
Very few.
Did not take the test.
Okay, but to get, I mean, I guess. High school, but to, to say, I mean, if we had seventy-seven percent come in, then we must have had a good bit of virtual if some of our.
We had, in elementary school, we did. We had a fair number of virtual. But again, with elementary, remember, we're dealing with three, three grades, third, fourth and fifth. Um, but we did have a fair amount of virtual students come in.
Yeah.
For elementary.
Even though, we just told you at the beginning, the virtual students couldn't come in as per the fed and blah, 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 but we still did anyways, right? Because we'll follow the rules we wanna follow that benefit us and how lazy we are, but like other rules were like, no, as per the blah, blah. Because, blah.
When we got to middle and high school, though, it was offset by a number of of in-person students who also didn't come in to test. So, the overall percentage for the district was fifty-five percent, um, which is somewhat.
Fifty-five percent of the district took the test. Okay, well, we're gonna assume that's the actual performing part of the district. As that's the part of the district that actually showed up, the school. Cause then when you go to virtual grades and attendance. For those that did virtual schooling, they're way worse than the in-person, which is why we know in-person is necessary. So, if you're gonna tell me, hey, these numbers are a little skewed because we only had the in-person students, but we know the virtual students scored way less. So if all those virtual students would have come in, our scores actually would have been worse. Not any better, but worse. You can try to like switch around the logic, so people get confused, which obviously is like a thing here. Like you just gotta be told things here in Muskogee County, but. The virtual students were the underperforming students by a landslide. Those students didn't take these tests. The people that came in, that were in-person students, came in and took the test. Those are the kids that grades weren't abysmal, but certainly weren't good. And look at, still, still, out of the in-person kids, the academic kids, out of those kids, only twenty-eight percent are proficient. Twenty-three in math in third grade. Just wait till you see those high school scores.
Reflective of the amount of students we had out in virtual, but it's not safe to assume that that was all in-person kids and not virtual kids. As evidenced by the fact that you can see, a large portion.
Yeah, I had high school students and that, and then they took the test, but they told me frequently that in-person people were not taking it.
Yeah, so, no, and I'm glad, I'm glad you raised that because that that's true. Like I said, you can see it with our elementary numbers, but the large number of kids that came in and then it's like, well. If it's seventy-seven percent here, why is it only thirty-something in the high school? And that's why a lot of students just stayed home and and didn't wanna take it.
Yeah.
Uh, one more question for clarity. Um, what does, um, when you say developing and above, does that mean?
The kids that would have done well are the kids that wanted to take it. The kids that would not have done well chose not to take it. If you think you're gonna do well on a test, you don't choose to not. If you think you're gonna do well on a test, you don't choose to not go in and take it. You want to take it. So.
Developing and proficient.
Developing, proficient and distinguished altogether. Yes, ma'am.
Now, uh, what what I'm trying to figure out is, um, what can you get from that? Because usually they're four categories. So when you say developing and above, they're overlapping and you go to the next category, develop proficient and above. Okay, so why didn't you do the regular categories like below level?
Needed to know who we were gonna pass on.
Proficient and then, um, advanced.
What she's not listening for is the explanation. It's because they here were just figuring out what kids to just pass on. Who could they pass on to the next grade and who did they really have to hold back? That's what they did. That's what they had to see. All right.
So that you can get a better idea of actually what you have.
And we do.
Because you got an overlapping, you have the developing and above, that's overlapping. And then you got proficient. And you're reporting proficient twice.
Well, yes and yes and no, but but I understand what you're saying. When when the state publishes it, though, when they're looking at developing and above, they're looking at students who, developing students are those students who are considered able to go on to the next grade level with some support. So what you're really looking at is a continuum of students who are ready to go on to the next grade level. And the state actually does a combined calculation as well. Um, it, you know, I can gladly, I'll send out the other. It's not, it's not, I'm not trying to obfuscate anything with the numbers. It's just, we were just trying to look at the number of students based on the results that we had that were essentially prepared to go on to the next level.
So you're doing it just for, for now? Cause I I my thing is that I I kinda want to see where we were, you know, in terms of how are the percentage of those, uh, below level and the percentage of developing, which is not the same thing as proficient. Proficient people are proficient. And then the, um, proficient proficient as opposed to the advanced. But I see what you, so you're saying the reporting you're done is you're doing here is is reporting for how y'all determine how to
pass it down.
Uh, assign students or something? I'm just trying to figure out.
Just in terms of readiness.
In terms of.
Readiness based on the results that we got. But again, the the main the main takeaway for these results really is at the student level. And that's one of the things that we've encouraged the schools to look at. In fact, we took prior score histories and appended those to these most recent scores to send on to the middle schools, to send on to the high schools so that they could look and see. Because again, this is really largely needs to be viewed at the student level.
Do you have these in the way that the state, in the per- current or the actual report, um, reporting way? Have you done these with the actual way that test scores are reported with the below level, developing?
Yes. We we have that. This this was, yes.
I can see that.
Yeah, this this was just really just again, I I like I said, I mean, we're looking at the thirty thousand foot view, but again, it's a lot of context. So we really were just trying to look at it in a way that shows, okay, the the level of readiness for students.
Level of readiness. Yeah, that's what you're doing. Okay. And then you said I can like come and see that later in your office or something.
In your own office.
I'm gladly sure that. We we do have that. And and again, the the developing and above is something that the state also publishes. Um, that's where we got that from. We didn't calculate that. That's what they.
Well, we do. I mean, I I understand when, you know, because because I got my pencil out to add for the.
Yeah. I understand. Okay, okay. Um, well, if you've got a pencil and you want to add stuff, I've got an office that we can, I mean, you can welcome upstairs if we can.
I got a pencil.
Use all the help we can get. So I mean.
I'll have.
Okay, so percent students tested, you can see for fourth grade, again, fairly comparable, um, with the state. And again, you can see here, the reading and above, it's pretty closely matches the states in this case. Um, developing and above and proficient above for ELA. And again, you can see math. Um, and again, you can see the differences with the math. And and then that was something that I read an article today that a researcher had predicted that math scores in general um, were probably largely going to suffer nationwide. Um, and that that we would see more of a drop there in general, just across the country, um, in terms of math.
Yeah, compare us to the state.
Fifth graders, if you remember, um, are the only grade that take the additional science test now, because remember, we've reduced the amount of testing we had. So again, you can see the numbers for ELA math and science, um, which was what the fifth graders added on. And then there's the results for that as well. Again, our, um, reading on grade level above was a little bit higher than the other two with sixty two percent. Um, also just again, looking at that math proficiency in fifth grade. But again, I I I say that and I pointed out, but I I I still want to caution that we really need to look at this at the individual student level.
Yeah.
Going on to middle school, um, again, you can see those participation rates starting to drop. They're starting to drop in the state and they're starting to drop here locally. Um, I know, Miss McCray, you said you had a high schooler, had a middle schooler that was an eighth grader that had to take, you know, sixth test and he was not happy.
So.
If you look at sixth grade, uh, again, reading in, uh, the grade level, reading on grade level or above, uh, was forty six point nine.
So now we should just stop teaching math because look at, um, so out of that fifteen percent, what demographic is that that's proficient? Like, let's be real, because we're gonna start to say that certain subjects are racist, like they do in California. We're gonna, we're gonna say that. Like, look at, look at fifteen percent, fifteen percent of our students are proficient in math in sixth grade, fifteen. Those kids will just get passed on to the next grade. You see how it drops with every grade. They'll just get passed on to seventh grade, eighth grade, whatever. And so now here are your high school graduates that have just been passed on year after year that actually don't know multiplication. Can't count you back your change, but it's okay because there are no jobs to be a cashier anymore. It's self-checkout. So no worries, guys. No jobs for anyone, no actual education either, but we'll keep employing people and paying them to stay home because coronavirus.
And the state committed fifty eight point three. Uh, you can see again with our proficiency levels for ELA is at thirty thirty point five percent. And for math, again, you can see the fifteen percent compared to the state thirties, thirty percent.
They're doing as well as our school district.
Okay, again, more drops in the participation rate as we get to seventh grade.
How many kids participated? Tell us the number.
And again, the reading levels, fifty five point two percent. Um, our proficient and above was at a twenty nine point seven percent for ELA. And then our proficient above for math is at twenty one point six. And the eighth grade, and again, they take four tests. Um, and in some cases for eighth graders, they actually take an additional test if they're in the high school course for algebra. But again, that you really start to see the participation rates drop off now. And you can see we're down in the forties for ELA math, science and for social studies. Here are those performance levels. And, um, they actually shortened the test this year as well. So the science and social studies tests were actually fairly short. Um, they weren't as long as they have been in the past and, uh, they took about twenty to thirty minutes to complete.
And still look at their proficiency.
Because of that, um, obviously with fewer questions, there's less of an opportunity to actually show what you know. Um, but those were considerably briefer tests. And now we're getting into the high school. So for high schoolers, they take the American Lit composition. And now you can see again, the participation rate's thirty six percent. Um, as compared to the state's fifty eight. And you can see the reading levels, forty three point seven, and the proficient and above is at twenty three, but again, the state you can see is at twenty nine. So it's really hard to tell who came in and tested, um, if any, if any.
I love Democrats running our.
Algebra one, um, little bit better, but again, algebra one has the eighth graders in there as well. So you, it got a bit of a bump just from the enthusiastic eighth graders that came in to to take the algebra one. Um, and again, you can see the proficiency levels there, um, and the difference between the state thirty to thirty point two and, um, NCSD at eighteen point four. Physical science, this was actually an EOC, but it was only given to eighth graders. The the assessment for high school's been retired. Um, so you can see we had fifty four percent of our kids come back to take it and the proficiency levels actually looked better than the state. Which is good. All right, biology, again, fifty nine percent participate or fifty nine at the state and forty four.
Well, when you allow an entire generation to believe there are more than two genders, it doesn't surprise me at all that proficiency is around thirty four percent. I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna assume those are the very few Christians left in the school system. Uh, I mean, they believe in whatever, but at least they also believe in gender.
Hundred of ours participated. And you can see the difference there between the proficiencies, uh, thirty four point three and a forty point seven for the state.
We see.
And US history, um, is the last one.
Well, there you go. I think we can just go ahead and end it here. Because they do say those who do not know their history are doomed to repeat the mistakes of the past. Communism, socialism, Marxism, just ushering its way in, all the isms. Gotta do whatever the government says, trust the government, rely on the mommy daddy government, the state. Oh, man, let's see how much history do our kids know so they aren't forced to repeat the mistakes? Oh. You mean sixteen percent of all our high school students are proficient in US history? Wow. Maybe if we just changed the critical race theory, they'd know more. No. This is disgusting.
And again, thirty one percent, um, and you can see the difference in the proficiency levels there, twenty nine point six and sixteen point two.
Should all be ashamed of.
So questions.
Disgusting. Questions, questions. What are our tax dollars paying for? Why aren't our kids actually being educated on the things that they are tested on? Why do our teachers suck so bad? Yeah, I said teachers, because teachers allow this. Teachers want the math. Teachers don't even ask the questions. They don't even bother to pull down the mask in science class and look at all the bacteria on it. Okay. Push your agenda, teachers. Keep going.
So, you know, looking through it, it, the gap seems to be bigger in the math area between. So soon we are looking at that hard and how to address that.
Yeah.
And I would still like to see the information comparing us to our cohorts, like that we typically see. I mean, it can be sent to me, I mean, sent to us.
Sure.
Um, we don't have to go over it in a meeting, but I would still be curious to see our performance based on similar districts.
I'll pop my head. I think we perform better in many of the areas, um, with our com- comparable districts. Um, but again, I I saw some districts with as low as three percent of students tested. Um, so when you're dealing with such small numbers, it it makes it really hard.
I guess your test shouldn't be bullshit. And I guess that parents should actually get the grades. And that when a kid is tested and it shows that they don't know crap, they're actually gone back and taught that crap. Instead, we just test, 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 tie the teacher's pay, tie funding, tie everything to it. As long as your kids do crappy, they get more and more money. So it actually benefits the school district for your kids to all be failing. Because we're like, oh, we need more money. We need more resources because look at our kids are failing. It's not because we're not teaching them anything. It's because we just clearly need more money. So give us millions and millions of dollars so we can waste them and you can pay extra for transportation that we won't provide. And I don't know. Like this just seems to be going real well. I don't see a problem here, guys.
Yeah, it makes it harder. But I I I mean, I can show you and you and you, I mean, you can look at the numbers and get the context for it, but I just. Again, I I reticent to to put anything up that would compare us with anyone because it's just really not a fair comparison. There were so many different models out there this last year. And with so many people really having the choice to come in and take it or not, it it just really is not reflective. At at an individual student level it is. And I think as a, as a parent, I would say to all of our parents and teachers, look at the prior score histories, look at that individual student report.
We don't get them.
Make a determination based on that as to whether or not your student put effort into it.
We don't get it.
You know, or it's something that we need to look at very closely because you know the year they had.
So just to put a point on some of this real quickly, our country spent billions.
When they say that, it's like, so just to reframe this in a way that makes us not look bad. And and I just really make sure to place blame on everything and anything that is just not within our control. Let me go ahead and like package this for all my little country club plans because I am hired by the school board to be the face and speak the things that they really all voted yes on, but I'm gonna say it was just me and me alone. Okay? And so everybody listen to me and my explanation, because just know, like, we're doing our best and we're all in this together. And like, so your brain, your choice, you don't have to take the test if you don't want to, but like your body, like our choice, like put a mask on it, like unless you. I don't know. I I don't know what the rules are now. Maybe they'll explain them.
Dollars. Last year in testing for results that we knew were not gonna be valid, but we were doing, were required to do it because of the federal requirement. So we did that and we now have the results which are not valid or comparable or reliable.
Valid? That, so so we spent a ton of money. We were forced to spend money on something to test all the kids that were willing to show up. They did crappy, which means those are the kids that thought they would actually do okay or whatever. They showed up, they did crappy because we have crappy teachers with a crappy school district. They weren't taught crap because of coronavirus, but we paid the money because we had to. And so the results aren't valid, but here they are. But they're not valid, but we paid millions of dollars, but there's millions of dollars just gone to the testing for not valid because they didn't show us numbers we like.
Uh, for any kind of comparison purposes. That said, though, the most important part of that is that uh, we have just one, the only way to really look at this, as I said in the release, is that this is one more data point that a family, a student, parents, whoever it might be.
Watch how Naomi latches. One more data point, one more data point. Ooh, I learned a new thing. That sounds so fancy, a data point. What's a data point? I like saying this. It's a data point. We have one more dat- it's just a data point. It's just one more data point, just another data point, just a data point. Like a news freaking compilation of them all saying the same damn thing.
Students can look at and compare with our other screening results that we've already been doing, the formative assessments and some of our baseline screeners to start developing a picture of where the students currently are, because that's really where we are now with the growth mindset moving forward. How are we going to recoup and make up? And we keep talking about learning loss, but I want to go back to something that said last week, it's not only learning loss, it's incomplete learning. When we went out in March thirteenth of twenty twenty, there were a lot of kids who had not even finished the year. All of our students did not even finish that year. So it was incomplete learning that year and then.
And they were just passed on to the next grade. And then a whole year of virtual, half in person, half not, half of our school district, almost fifteen thousand kids stayed out of school for an entire year. Will they give us those numbers? Will they let us know, hey, all right, let's compare because you know they have them. They have all the grades, they have the attendance, they have everything. They won't share them with us. But they have it. What was the attendance versus in-person and virtual? What were the grades for in-person and virtual? Why do you think they forced everybody in this year? Because virtual was crap and they know it. So now they forced everybody to go, those who don't comply. You get segregated from the population, from the school district and the community. That's fine, whatever. I don't even remember where I was going with this freaking rant. It's so damn disgusting. But he's just like, remember, we have all these things and they're all the reasons why we are terrible at our jobs, but we have extra new data points, data points. That's right. Naomi latches on to data point. Let's just let her just data point herself like data, I learned a new phrase. I'm so smart. Look at me on the school board with my mask. I'm so smart, saving all the lives.
Her loss may have ensued as a result of that. So it's just really imperative that we realize now we're in a, in a growth mindset going forward from where developing a baseline. Moving forward, and the good news is we have a lot of res- resources, uh, at our disposal with Lexia, Achieve Three Thousand, IXL and others that are available and they develop individual.
The good news is we have all these resources available to us, all the same resources that were available to us last year and the year before, the year that we just stopped. You know, sending our kids to school in March and just pass them on. We had Lexia and IXL them too, but now we have them. So that's the good news. Because we had them all last year and you can just pay ten dollars to go on IXL and see Georgia's standards and just follow along. You don't even need to go to our trash schools. But, but now that we have these resources that we've had for the last two years, just, it's just, it's great.
Has learning paths for students based on their, uh, baseline data. So we have an opportunity to grow our students going forward. And I do want to remind everyone, what we've been told is this is gonna be about a three, anywhere from a three to five year recovery period. And that's not including whatever we're going through in the coming months ahead. So, uh, it's gonna be something worth it though.
This is gonna be a three to five year thing where we figure out what we're doing because we have no clue. And that's not including like Delta and all the other variants we're gonna make up and like Afghanistan just pulled. So don't look at Arizona election audits, like don't pay attention to Fulton County, like Joe Biden is your president. If you don't vote for Joe Biden, you ain't. Don't pay attention to Fulton County, like Joe Biden is your president, if you don't vote for Joe Biden, you ain't.
Work it, be patient at, and then our students are gonna need additional time and and uh resources. To help us, that's why we've done a lot of things through the ARP, uh putting resources in additional learning time. Uh, we'll have some mini grants available for our schools that were mentioned last week to look at. Uh, developing an individualized plan for students in respective schools, because every school has its own unique DNA, as I call it. Uh, so they're gonna. Just to help shore up and work with kids going forward, so we we do have the resources, we've got some the funding to help us uh do a lot of these things. But I want everybody to realize, this is not gonna be a quick fix, we're, this is a um an endurance, it's not a sprint. So that's probably the best way to put that going forward, so. Nothing comparable by these results, but certainly uh one more data point to use for uh helping us inform instruction going forward.
I I wanna ask something. Uh, you did a very good job, you know, in uh putting everything in context. And showing us, you know, just like what Dr. uh Lewis has said, how uh. How we should look at these scores, you know, in terms of all the things that.
So you can't actually like look at the data and look at the scores, you have to listen to how the other person is telling you how to look at them. So that way you don't like get any silly ideas in your head, like actual questions, like don't analyze the data, that's his job, okay, guys? And so the school board, they definitely don't bother to analyze the data, they pay someone else to do it, why would you even think about it? Why would you even think about it? Like, they tell you, we have experts for that, we have experts to just tell you, like they analyze the data and they just tell us, like so like. Thanks for telling us how to think about this. And we won't think about it any other way and we won't ask any questions, because like this is just. And so just coronavirus.
The the scores in uh during the pandemic, you you talked about the virtual. Uh, the attendance, people coming, so, but uh like uh this this that grade. I also would like to, if you've done it, did did you do a comparison group?
We have the data, we adopt, put it together for comparisons.
He said he had it.
Haven't done that.
But we can.
But you can.
No, we can, we we didn't, because it.
Do you people not know how this works? He's gonna set up a little table, he already has the data, it'll just populate. Per the grades they got into the four different labels that you're used to seeing, Naomi. He has the information, they sent all the comparisons off to every single school individually, so the school can look. If I'm Dawson Elementary, even though you don't have the comparison here, they can sit here and be like, last year's test scores, this year's test scores. And they'll know how many took it, in person, virtual, blah, 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 so they'll be able to do the own, their own comparison at an individual level, that's what he said multiple times, you have. The ability to get those things, he already said he would provide all those things to you. Now, if you want it changed up into your four little labels that you understand that your little pea brain can get. He can do that, because he sets up the little table, the data's already there, it populates and then he sends it off to you. I don't know, maybe look up on YouTube, how does data analysts work? What does a data analyst do? How to be a data analyst?
Again, it wasn't, it wasn't gonna guide anything for us, in terms of planning, so.
If it's not, you know, if it takes a lot of time, you know, I, you know, I wouldn't. If if it's not that much and putting it together, I still would like to see it still like like Dr. Lewis is, it's just like a a data point, that I'd just like to look at stuff. And also, if you, now you say you did, you do have where the uh scores are separated by the four.
Yeah, the state, yeah, the state provided that.
Provided, okay, this, oh, the state provides that, okay, good, I I like to see that too.
So go get it.
Ms. Chambers.
Well, oh, he's gotta do the work.
Um, yes, thank you so much, um, Mr. Ma for that information on the Georgia milestone. Um, as Dr. Lewis um alluded to in his comments, I'm. I'm not sure how useful this information will be to teachers and to parents. When they're trying to plan for instruction. Or to figure out where the learning losses are, or even if the kids have made gains in certain areas. Um, so I was wondering, could you explain, how are we communicating to our teachers? How they're supposed to use this information in order to fill in the gaps for individual students? Or are they gonna use this information at all? Um, in order to do.
But that's literally, I appreciate the questions, but that's literally what he's saying, that's not what this information was for, this information was literally to figure out. How many kids we could just pass on, like how many were doing well enough to pass on and that's it. Because as Dr. Lewis said, this information is not valid, because not a lot of people took it, so. They sent off what they could send to the schools, but as far as actually garnering what the kids need and what they don't. That is going to have to be assessed by actual assessments. So you know all those handy assessment tests you have these kids take at the beginning of a school year? It will assess where they are, and then the parents and the teachers can then. Individually plan, an individualized plan. For each child, we don't need these stupid, three percent of your school took this test and twenty eight percent are proficient in math. You're right, that doesn't help, this is a big waste, it's a big waste of money, millions and millions of dollars that you're all like, nope, but we have to do. So let's waste our million dollars and do our presentation, because it doesn't do crap and it's wasting time, and so here we go, is it helping?
Uh, how do, how do we make sure that these individual students are actually making some gains? In the right area?
Well, I think I'll go, I would go back to what Dr. Lewis said, which which is looking at all of the data points that we have just from ending the year. Um, and then all of the data points that we're looking at now, one of the things we conveyed to bu- building leaders with this was that, it needs to be.
I'd also like to point out the fact that like, he's the what, division teaching and learning guy? Like au- chief academic officer, okay, so he's presenting all the data and data analysts. But is he the one that makes up the individual education plans? Like, not even for special needs kids, but is he the one that's gonna implement and figure it out down at the schools? No. Y'all need to get with the principals, get with the teachers, and y'all need to figure it out, that's what they're saying. At per each school, this guy is not gonna do it?
Looked at an individual student level in context of that student's score history, beyond that, I don't think that I would. Um, use it to make any determinations of um necessarily learning loss or anything else, because again, for, I mean, for some students. You know, to some degree, this might have been, well, I think for all of us, it was time to duress. Um, but I mean, I think we have, we have a lot of data available to make those determinations and already we're making those determinations along the way. Before we even sat down for the test, we knew which students were struggling, um, we knew which ones we felt comfortable about where they were. And honestly, I don't think any of us are a hundred percent comfortable about where any of them are, um, we want them all to do better.
Well, I might also point out, if I may to, I if I may point out too. Uh, that's another reason why we, why in-person instruction is so important, getting the students back in school, so we can give those screening assessments and our formative assessments to.
I agree with that statement, which is why I've tried so hard to be able to send my children, who are denied. Entrance into the schools, bye. I won't allow you to put my healthy children in a mask. I'm a sensible, logical person and very rational, you have to logically get me somewhere, you have to make it make a sense. Here's this non-CDC compliant mask, let me put it on your healthy kids, so they breathe in all their own CO2, all this bacteria all day long. And you're not allowed in the school, you can't see inside the classroom, you can't meet these people, the school is rated F. We have fifteen percent proficiency in English and math, but send your kids to me, let me put, make these decisions for you and them. With no child psychologist, no, oh, but for for people's safety, for people's safety, do what we say, for people's safety. Because we are so good at doing so many things, listen to us, um, no. No, I would like my kids to be able to attend, attend in person, but that's only if I have the money. To send them to the private schools, like you guys do, where masks are actually optional here in Muskogee County to the private schools, and how do I do that? Oh, I know, the tax dollars that you steal out of my paycheck and my husband's paycheck, how about instead of going to you and your scumbag? Probably make as much as the president freaking paycheck. Instead, it comes to me, so I can afford an education for my child, but since you steal my money. And then deny my kid access to a public education, they don't even get to be on Chromebooks, which our tax dollars paid for. So no public education whatsoever, while I pay for it, not giving that service for my children, you get extra money, because my kid is special needs. You get extra money for his bus and for an extra teacher pair and all that, but we get nothing but in person, that's why we're making it. In person, because they must go in person, because kids need to be in person, but not your kids, not your kids, not you. Not you if you ask why, not you if you don't love the math, not you. Oh, not your kids, not my kids, not my kids. No, it's important for all the other kids, but not my kids, not my kids, it's not that important for my kids. Okay, I got it.
Wants to start developing that profile of the students, so we know exactly where this is just one element, one data point. But those others can help kind of shape the full picture, it's kind of like a mosaic, this is one tile in the mosaic, there are others that help us kind of. Form the picture about where we are and where we need to go.
I I was just gonna go back to um make a comment on something that Ms. Chambers said, um. And that will be um, uh, teachers, individual, teachers can use this information for individual students. Now, they may not be able to, and like you said.
How could it even be useful? Three percent of Matthews Elementary took these tests. And twenty eight percent of that three percent in third grade was proficient in math. So what? So what? What they're saying is, the teachers need to look at individual grades and make plans for each student individually, because this general snapshot is barely a snapshot. And you're like, but teachers can still, I see, teachers can still use this information, or can't they? Oh my god, all of this is literally useless. It gives us a tiny, tiny little picture, and to those willing to actually just take the test, the end. So now, let's go and focus on all these kids who literally can't count you back your change. Who, if there was even a job for them at Walmart, wouldn't be able to do it, okay? My god, you guys are stupider than the people you teach, like honestly.
But teachers would find this information um valuable, because they, just like Dr. Lewis said, it's just. It's just one data point, and they have other stuff, and so they can put it in context with what they have. And uh and find it quite useful.
Alright, thank you everyone for the input, thank you, Dr. Ma.
Thank y'all.
They're all like shot up, you're so stupid, you make us all look bad, that is.
Alright, board members are moving into our action agenda, five point zero one is the reelection of certified personnel for.
Okay, so that that's literally it, there's all the testing grades, whatever. Doctor like always likes to make himself like seem all, you know, important, and Sydney Williams likes to make a big show of herself. I don't know, I'm sure they're all just congratulating each other here. Oh, and so much coronavirus and all, let's all just talk amongst each other and just, oh my god, could we like pat each other on the back and stuff, this will be so great.
The the good guy, cause when you come up, you're always showing what we've done at the schools. Every, every month when you go in, and I like that, you know, because I always say. And will continue to say, that um. What we've done in construction, what we've done at all these schools. Uh, keep uh keeping the schools up and um, uh, all the additions and um. Beautifying our schools, that has done more for um. Relationships in Columbus, Georgia, in what we have traditionally called our north and our south divide. Uh, as we drive around to all the schools, all over the district. We see nice buildings everywhere, we see athletic fields done well everywhere. And so, uh, what we had just.
Uh-huh, and we built lots of really nice section eight housing, just to knock it all down and build it somewhere else. Because when you just give things to people for free, they don't take care of them. Okay? So, you enjoy those, that twenty five million dollar football field, you, oh my god. We have less than ten thousand kids in our high schools. You enjoy all these pretty new schools with all this money, where you forego our child's actual education. For the looks of it, that's right, because what we really know about Columbus, Georgia is, it's more about keeping up with the Joneses. And it's more about how others perceive you than reality. So better just put on that mask, because what's the big deal? And everyone will know, you care more about them than you care about your own breathing, so that makes you a good person. But if you don't wear that mask, that means you're a grandma killer, and you don't care. But it also means you're on the opposite side of my thinking altogether, which makes you an enemy. So, let's all wear, get vaccinated and wear our masks, wear three masks, keep masks on kids. Force them into schools, my body, my choice, unless I want you to wear a mask. Yeah, y'all are so jacked up, and just cause I'm filing for homeschooling for my kids. Doesn't mean I'm going away, cause like I promise, you're stuck with me, so I'm stuck with you, and.
A few years ago, it was always uh, uh, some controversy. Was always the talk of the north and the south divide. Uh, always some sense of unfairness, but you know, it's very interesting how even sports. And how people can walk in their homes or in their buildings. And feel good about the buildings that they are, they come to uh learn in.
So it doesn't matter if we're divided by race, it doesn't matter if we're divided by north and south directions. It doesn't matter if we're divided by political party, it just matters that we have beautiful buildings to walk in and see. And it's so amazing to see these beautiful football fields, and maybe a pretty nice mall, and all these great new hotels and restaurants. Because we have all these things that divide us and keep us divided, and and that's just how the south is, and so. Let's build another building. And wear a mask to get inside of it. F off, Naomi, you're disgusting.
So um, that's how I will always remember you, standing showing us all buildings and and so good as a good guy.
Oh, the good guy.
I was gonna say, you were here when I got here, so I missed the whole first meeting, but um, I will just say that from the beginning. I have known that there was a countdown to your retirement, because I know you wanna be closer to your daughter, and we're just very grateful for all that you have done and.
I see.
You worked hard until the last minute, and we're also glad to know that COVID was.
Sorry, I just don't like Naomi, my bad, I didn't know this was like a retirement thing, my bad, I'm sure you're actually totally awesome. My bad, that was totally my bad.
The reason that we didn't do you in this past year, but we just wanna wish you the best.
So how many days I have left? Fifteen days, okay.
Look at, we're all friends.
Alright, um, board, do you have anything, any requests? Well, I do, I do want one thing for uh Dr. Lewis to consider to bring back um to us. Um, the, we're back in school where we should be, um, and.
Except for my kids, I mean, my kids should be there too, but my kids aren't back in school. Ms. Green makes sure of it, Naomi Baker makes sure of it, and Dr. Lewis makes sure of it. Those kids, those healthy kids, that autistic child that just learned to speak six months ago, that that kid? That kid is not back in school, he's not even allowed back in school, he's not even allowed access to a computer. To at least virtually be back in school, we take his parents' money and we line our pockets with it, Ms. Green just gave herself a raise. Dr. Lewis got a raise too, isn't that cool? Oh my god, they get bonuses for actually showing up too, so even though they weren't actually attending all the school board meetings, I was, they get money to do it. Isn't it great that we can just give them raises as our kids fail? And drop out, and are pushed out, and left behind? And they show us the numbers and how they're being left behind and passed around? And you do nothing about it, Muskogee County, you parents do nothing about it, you email me, you call me. You all say you agree with me, and oh yeah, you go, you do it, but none of you fight for your kids. All of you comply. You bitch about it online, but you don't do anything about it. I blame all of you, I blame every single one of you, I don't care what side of what argument you fall on. If you're not there, if you're not resisting, if you're complying, if you're sticking a mask on your healthy kid. Against your better judgment, I blame you. I blame every single one of you.
And which also include our personnel and they're having to use their sick days, and I know y'all are getting phone calls like I am. Um, about having to use their sick days, if you would. Looking to see, whatever we did, I I, it probably was. Some of the federal funding that allowed for us to for to pay them. Some of the federal funding that allowed for us to, for, to pay them instead of them using their sick days. As well as new employees who haven't earned any sick days who are having to quarantine, so. I want you to come back to us and let us know how we're taking care of our employees when it comes to having to quarantine or be out sick. Uh, with COVID.
There's your real superintendent, by the way, guys, they just pretend.
Alright, anything else? Alright, we have an executive session for a personnel matter. There was a motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Chambers, raise your hand, good night, everyone.
And there you have it, guys, so, that's it, that's how well, Muskogee County doing great, my kids officially. Alright, so, let's go to plus. Display capture. Let's do window capture, I'm gonna show you all, okay. Okay, let me make this a little smaller. So, here is the website. Georgia Department of Education dot org, so, G A D O E dot org. You'll just put in intent to homeschool, this is the homeschool, home study program declaration of intent. In the state of Georgia, all you have to do is just put in your kid's information, date and sign. Print it and it's submitted to the state, you're good to go. And so, that's what I did. I have no other option. If I could get my kids in school, I would, the principal and the teachers are actually fantastic, it's the school district that's actually like horrendous. They discriminated against my children because of who I am and my beliefs. They segregated my children from their schools, from their schoolmates, from the local community. They didn't allow my kids the public education that all other kids have access to, to include today, here, virtual, all kids are virtual today, but my kids aren't allowed. We're not operating on backs and I can't want more for a community than it wants for itself. And so, Muskogee County, Columbus, Georgia loves their gang violence, they're blame everyone else. And they're lazy, do nothing, expect everything to be done for me because excuses. So, this is what you get when merit no longer rules. It's just excuses and hide behind and whatever, so, welcome to Columbus, Georgia IRL. That was fun, huh, guys? See you next time.